We are.
All right.
Okay, so it looks to me as almost everyone has dropped out at this point.
Yeah, I've lost Andrew. I renamed him and then he disappeared.
He came in as his, as his son.
Right, so I renamed him in anticipation of promoting him and then he disappeared.
He'll be back. Tim dropped out now, too.
I'm here within earshot. I'm just getting a pen or a pencil to write.
No problem. We weren't, we didn't think you were too far.
Thank you. I'm back.
There he is. Okay. Okay, so it is now six fifty-three and we are here for a special meeting of Mayor and City Council to, and the first item on the agenda is a discussion, possible action on spending plan for the American Recovery Plan Act funds allocated to the city. I think everyone is aware that the city was awarded through the American Recovery Act approximately one, one point seven million dollars, which will come to us in two installments over the next two years and so we need to figure out how we would like to spend these monies. And there are specific guidelines that have been provided to us and some of that clarification is still forthcoming. So the initial availability of funds will be somewhere close to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We do have, there is, there is no rush to spend these monies. These monies will remain available to us until December of twenty-four. So we have some time and it's important that we use these monies to improve conditions around the city and within the city, I should say, and I think we've identified, Anne Marie has set out a, a note to everyone identifying some of the possible considerations. And we're here tonight to discuss other ideas of what might be possible. And Ellen Lorraine and Anne Marie have been looking at this and come up with some ideas. You may also know that we participated, we opted to participate in a program that's been put together by the state auditor, Kathy McGinnis, which will be an accountability of the expenditures of these monies. And she's doing that, offering that statewide for all municipals for an accounting system which will further facilitate the ability to report how we are spending these funds when we need to report. Anne Marie or Ellen Lorraine, would you like to go further at this point with comments?
I'll go, I'll start with just kind of a brief overview of what we have here. One, we've already discussed using the funding for the restaurants at the Rollin Center. So by the time we factor in, you know, any possible change orders, because unfortunately that tends to happen. And architectural building construction oversight fees with GMB, just to, you know, give a little cushion in our estimating, we've got about four hundred thousand dollars allocated to that. About fifteen thousand dollars for the AV upgrades at the Rollin Center that will need to have the meetings there. That has been committed. And at this point, the, there is, some of the equipment is on backorder. So I'm waiting to hear from them for when everything comes in so that we can schedule the installation. The cleaning contract with with Oceanside Elite to clean all of the city restrooms and the the public restrooms and other city buildings is a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Ellen Lorraine and I thought that would be eligible. We ordered two new kind of park-style picnic tables. One for the maintenance area and one for the courtyard outside of the break room so that staff can eat outside where there's better air exchange. Extra cleaning for porta-potties and hand sanitizer, we're estimating it about five thousand. If, if we also use this funding to offset the cost of additional porta-potties, hand washing stations and hand sanitizer for Fourth of July, that, that could go up a little bit. Again, signage and sanitizer for Fourth of July, we want to have the signs that are required for the event saying, you know, distance, all the hand sanitizing stations, that kind of stuff. One of the eligible expenses that we hadn't really discussed was utility payments for delinquent customers who are in need. And we ended up becoming aware of two cases and I let the board know that we had this money available. So there were two customers that we partnered with the BPW to kind of bring up to date, letting them know it was a one-time thing, but I talked to Suzanne at BPW, Suzanne Powell, about, you know, coming up with a mechanism so that, that we can use that. Again, she knows very well, I think you've probably heard, if you go to any of the board meetings, you've heard them talk about how, how good she is at collecting their revenues. So she knows if somebody's, you know, going through a difficult time, if they're, you know, unemployed or low-wage job and having trouble paying, so, so she, she's able to really kind of let us know when, when that would come into, to effect. And then we have the Division of Public Health has reached out to Janet and wants to have vaccination events as part of our summer concert series. So we would pay for staffing hours involved in supporting that with the funds. I, I also put, while we haven't technically allocated money or estimated, there were three other things that I listed. One is vaccination incentives for staff. We still have a number of staff who have not expressed interest in vaccination. If we did something that included, say, gift cards to local, you know, in-town restaurants or shops. We're thinking if we do raffles similar to what the state's doing, that might help. But again, we will want to get council's feedback on that. Putting together some sort of an event to recognize the frontline healthcare staff. Wireless service in the parks under, there is a broadband allowance. And then there are two things that I did not put down here that I think came up after this went out. One is, a lot of places are using the funding to improve ventilation systems in buildings so that you get better air exchange, you know, maybe HEPA filtration, you know, there are a number of things. So that is something that we could do for our workspaces that, to make them just healthier places. The, the other thing that has come up that Ellen Lorraine and I discussed, we, we need to, to verify that it is eligible, but National Night Out is in August and we think it's going to be hard to have the food component to the event the way we normally do, where we have, you know, pretty much all the officers flipping burgers, assembling them and, and, you know, staff handing them out, that we're not sure that we're going to be able to do that in compliance with public health guidelines because, you know, we don't have a commercial kitchen. So we were talking about possibly doing something where maybe we put something out to all restaurants in town and invite them to, to work with us and then we would, you know, obviously pay for something. It would have to be kind of grab-and-go food, so obviously nothing super fancy. So be probably something for most places that would not be on the menu, so we'd be looking for something specific, but obviously there'll be a, a cost that is greater than our normal food expense for National Night Out. Those are the things I have. I don't know, Ellen Lorraine, am I missing anything?
Yeah, I think that you've covered the discussion that we had.
All those things that you've added on, we've had specific requests regarding the wireless service in our beach areas. And, and we know from fire departments report that the vast majority of the calls I get for nine eleven, for nine eleven, nine-one-one are relating to coming from cell phones. So wireless service probably would be something we would want, would be a, an item we should possibly consider for Beach One Two and Roosevelt. The installation of a router and getting that up and running, it's one option.
Listen, there are also a need described to find a year or so ago Ted about broadband along the, in the Marina area as well.
That's true. That could be, could be another option.
And that could be addressed at this time, but I think Anne Marie, if I understood her correctly, she said in all the parks, I think, isn't that right, Anne Marie? Is that what she said? Broadband?
You're muted, Anne Marie.
Um, I didn't say all the parks, in parks in general, so I don't think that, I think it would be specific based on how the parks are, you, you know, how each individual park is used and what the expectation is in terms of customers having access to, to network services.
I would think that Stango Park probably is pretty well-covered, given the presence of the library. I would think broadband services are probably pretty readily available there, but we could look into it.
Yeah. Anne Marie, can you just help me with how the Margaret Rollins edition is fits in this for eligibility?
Well, so it, what we determined is that really to be able to have to be able to have adequate, to fully resume in-person meetings, we don't have the space in council chambers for, for people to have distance. So especially when you look at our, our larger committees and commissions, the Planning Commission and Parks and Recreation come to mind. It, it's going to be very hard to even get the commissions in the room and visible on, you know, a, a screen, much less including the public in there. So in order for people to be able to have space. We, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed the other part, that we can't have our large meetings in there, we've determined, without adding restaurants.
When the, when the original agreement was struck with LHS on the use of the restrooms, it was, there was no anticipation that we would be going there on, on the frequent basis that we would need to in order to go forward. So that has created quite a burden for them to be able to have staff and they have, they've had issues which they've been just talking with us about concerning the safety of the contents of the museum and allowing people to go through there and not having adequate control when, when it's not open to the public. So when we designed, when GMV designed the, the add-on building or the add-on restrooms, it was anticipated that this would alleviate any responsibility on the LHF's or the LHF's to keep the building open so we could conduct meetings, because we can't conduct meetings there without restaurants. Go ahead.
Aren't there any facilities over in the new library large enough to accommodate us?
Not, not on a regular basis. I mean, that, that library is very heavily used.
It gets a lot of use. And then the other thing is the streaming, the ability to, to stream the meetings. We really need our own fixed infrastructure to be able to do that, which we have in council chambers and, and we're in the process of adding in the Rollin Center.
And I believe, Anne Marie, you've already explored whether or not this was an eligible expenditure of monies, is that correct?
So there's nobody, there, there's nobody who says yes or no, but I have mentioned it to the, the various, you know, you know, I, I submitted a question for the congressional delegation to Treasury and you know, about mainly explaining why we're using it for the restrooms and trying to get confirmation on whether we needed to utilize the Davis Bacon Wage Rate. I never got an answer on the Davis Bacon Wage Rate, but there was never any question of whether this was eligible under the, the funding. Because it's part of kind of resuming our normal operations, which we, we can't do under the current facility.
Wow, because if that ends up getting rejected, then we've just, we've incurred a, a big cost, you know, we've realized a big overrun and what our projected costs were going to be for this bathroom, the bathrooms.
I don't think there's any reason to believe it would not be considered eligible.
Okay. May I ask you a question, Anne Marie, please, about the about the process? And I guess I, I want to make sure that we are not going to get, you know, get, get ourselves into trouble. With respect, for example, to the cleaning contract, I think you described it for the restrooms. There was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that a one-year contract for the restrooms and the public bathrooms and so forth to be claimed?
It's a two-year contract.
It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
It's a two-year contract?
But it's a hundred and fifty a year.
Yeah.
So it's three hundred thousand.
Well, I think that we were thinking that only a portion of it would, would come under the federal money, is that correct, Ellen Lorraine?
I think we were budgeting the entire cost of your contract, but the one fifty is from May to the end of March, because it's an eleven-month year, and then in FY twenty-three, it'll be for the full twelve months.
Okay.
And so for, for each year, so approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is that correct, Ellen Lorraine?
Yeah, it will be a little bit more on FY twenty-three because of the addition.
Right.
And we have, these monies will remain available till twenty, to the end of twenty-four, so if we, that would help fund that contract.
And what, yeah, right. Where I was going to go with my question was, are we, is there any requirement that is, that we do a competitive bid? Does the federal government require us to pursue a competitive bid process? I know we have our own policy as a city when we're spending city dollars, but does the federal government have a similar expectation expressed for us?
Yeah.
They, they do.
Yeah.
And both the contract and the, the bathrooms were bid.
Right.
You have to bid.
What I don't know, and before we commit, before we commit this funding to the, the cleaning contract, we need to figure out if there's a Davis Bacon provision, because that it, it might be, it might drive up the cost if we were, so, so we need to look at that.
Drive up the cost, why? I'm sorry.
If you're required to pay Davis Bacon Wage Rates.
Oh, okay, I got you. Right, right.
Um, I suspect they're not meeting that, so we need to look at the, the the table of, of the different rates.
And Anne Marie, the, the use of the federal monies to, to help people meet their their utility payments, that is allowed under ARC, is that correct?
That's, that's specifically in there. It, it's also in there for rent and, you know, other housing-related expenses. So yes, that is specifically, and I, I think for, for us, it's a much smaller portion because within the city limits, the number of people who, who, you know, can't pay their utility bill, that number is much smaller in Lewis than it is in most jurisdictions.
Right, but we would, I, because the BPW serves people in the county as well, would they be, would they be available or qualified for this, any of these funds?
So, so the county is, is getting, I think, about forty-five million dollars through the program. So I think it's important that the city use the funds for city purposes. And if the county wants to use some of their funds to help county residents who can't pay their electric bill or their rent or sewer bill, that, that would be a county decision, because the county is also a recipient of the funds. I don't think it's appropriate to use city funds outside of the city.
Right, I understand that distinction. Thank you very much.
We, we, another eligible expense is to use some of it for, to support nonprofits. And we have not, there are also a number of funding streams out there through the, the act that go directly to nonprofits. So we haven't really looked at the nonprofit situation. I haven't gotten any inquiries except one. The Diamond State Community Land Trust had asked if we would be utilizing any of our funding to help support or would we use any to help support their, their mission as it relates to the, the project that they're working on with Preston, Shell and Lewis.
That could become something, and I think we need to, some of this information about eligibility is still coming out.
That project, oh, sorry Ted, I'm, so I just came unmuted, sorry.
Go ahead, what are we going to say?
Well, I had a question, maybe if you could kill two birds with one stone, but didn't that project have costs associated with stormwater management?
Sewer.
Sewer.
I think it was sewer and water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the other thing that, that Anne Marie mentioned was some recognition of BD. And this came up at the Chamber Breakfast the other day, when Dr. Tam mentioned that, you know, BD personnel have continued to work and what they did in terms of meeting the community's needs, and I realize their community needs, they serve the community much larger than Lewis, but they are located in Lewis with their inpatient facilities and, you know, it would be one of the things we could do. He was saying how much the personnel at the hospital responded to the event that happened, it was kind of spontaneous, all the fire engines came and were outside on Savannah Road and did a event where they just blew their horns and sounded their whistles and how much people enjoyed that and, you know, felt that they were being recognized. We could, and we could use some of these monies to sponsor some kind of a BD recognition day for what they did to step up the, to meet the needs of the COVID illness in terms of changes they made, staffing they made, standard additions they made. And that might be a, a smart, a prudent thing to do with some of these monies, not, not a huge expenditure, but some kind of community recognition.
Anne Marie. Anne Marie, a question for you. When do you expect that you're going to be given the set of instructions that go with all this money?
I, I don't believe we will. I think that they're, I, I think that they intentionally have, have provided very loose and flexible guidelines. And I think what's, what's important and, you know, I can only address this as it relates to what we do with it. But, you know, my understanding through like the National League of Cities is that this is the first time that such a large sum of money has been directly allocated to municipalities of all size. A, a lot of times it, it, like in that, in the CARES Act, it was set at fifty thousand population, a lot of times it's set at five hundred thousand population. So, so typically when, when Congress allocates money to municipal purposes, it's to big cities. So this is the, the first time that they, they've gotten down to this level. And, and I think, you know, one of the things I've heard repeatedly in the seminars is while they're being very flexible and very loose about how it's spent under the, the guidelines put forth in the legislation, that we also want to make sure that as municipal governments, we're being responsible and that we are able to tie it to that federal purpose so that it, it doesn't get kind of held out as, you know, a bad example of what happens. So, you know, one of the webinars that I attended, and this might help answer Andrew's question from earlier, was, you know, the question came up about, you know, road projects or or, you know, a trail project and, and they said, you know, you have to be able to say in good conscience COVID in some way, shape or form caused a need for this project to be done at this point in time. And with road projects, you pretty much can. I mean, it's really hard to, to make that. The, the exceptions were like water and wastewater infrastructure and and broadband. And I think that the reality is, as it relates to broadband, the big thing is everybody, you know, if, if we'd learned anything in the last year, it's that a lot of places don't have it and we all kind of need it. But, and then the, the sewer and water stuff, I mean, the, the allocation we're getting is, I would say, pretty sizable for our purposes. But if you take this funding and start allocating it to large infrastructure projects, it's gone in a heartbeat because those, those projects are, are very large by their nature.
Anne Marie, I have another question. What role does Mayor and City Council play in this then? Are, are we expected to vote to each allocation? Or are you going to decide where it gets allocated or how is this mechanized?
Well, so as it relates to, say, the, the Rollin Center, when we brought the bid forward, we specifically stated that that was going to, to be funded through that. The, the Rollin Center, with that, I, I, I had put that forward and that is, you know, probably the, the straightest line to, to COVID, other than like hand sanitizer. Be, because clearly the, the need to stream meetings over video is something that's going to be a, a longer-term issue. You know, the picnic table was a pretty small expense, but we thought it was important to have outside places. So, you know, for these smaller things, I guess Ellen Lorraine and I feel comfortable that we, they're, they're small enough purchases, you know, after, from picnic tables down, they're, they're small enough purchases that there would be administrative authority, but I think beyond that, you know, if we, if we want to do something like vaccination incentives, you know, to follow the state's lead, the event to, to recognize frontline healthcare workers, ventilation, wireless in parks, I, I think that those, those specific items, we would want council to, to weigh in on because they're bigger items and, you know.
Yeah, and I think before some of those.
So operational.
I think before we did some, made some decisions on some of those things or recommendations on some of those things, we need to have more information, like what would, what would the cost be to do something to the ventilation system in this building that's in the water? You know, Charlie needs to come in or bring in an HVAC burner. You know, Charlie needs to come in and, or bring in an H B O C person and, you know, what kind of situation are we looking at? Twenty-five thousand dollars or we looking at twenty-five thousand dollars? You know.
So, and, and speaking of that, go ahead, Carolyn.
If I understand you correctly, what you're saying is that we as council would weigh in on the more costly things?
Yeah, right.
Okay, understand. Go ahead, Kim.
Uh. Well, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna not ask that question right now. Thank you. I'll hold up on that one. Go ahead.
Some of these things we have, the money hasn't arrived yet. And so we don't have to make any decisions on this. This is really kind of a preliminary discussion, just to make sure everybody's on board here, um, in terms of uh, some of the things that have been considered or being considered. And also to, uh, sort of stimulate discussion about what other things might we, we come up with that we think want consideration, keeping in mind that this is to be in response to or improving situations that, uh, were brought about as, or were needed for improvement as a result of what we learned from the COVID experience.
Right. Uh, I, I would like to, uh, encourage, uh, Ellen Lorraine and Anne Marie to, uh, move forward on getting, uh, quotes on the broadband issue for the, the Marina area and the parks that have been, does, that the group decides are the higher priority. I think that's something that we should, that would be a high priority as far as I'm concerned. And I do have one question. Um, Anne Marie, what is the status of the contract with the Rollins Center and the bathrooms there?
So the, um, Glenn has reviewed, it's a standard architectural contract, but, but Glenn did, did look at it. Um, I think um, G M B is finalizing the, the contract details before we sign it and that we're hoping to be getting started in the next four weeks or so.
Yeah.
At this point, I'm
Okay, so, so, uh, it'd be, yeah, after the Fourth of July. And the contractor, has he provided any estimate as far as how long with the, is it a two month, three month period?
Um, it's a hundred twenty day.
Four months.
Four months.
So, and, and they said even a hundred twenty days is going to be a little place.
I would be, I think, I think we're looking at probably October, November.
Right.
Before we see it.
And, and that's why, and we'll talk about this next Monday, but that's why, um, we're trying to figure out how to do at, at least some meetings, um, maybe council and some of the, um, commissions, committees that have fewer members and fewer, um, public participation. Um, we, we want to figure out how to do at least some of these meetings in council chambers and interim because I, you know, I, I don't think the idea of waiting until October, November to, to start having in-person meetings is ideal.
I could ask, there, there are two things, uh, I think our participation with Open Gov, which is the program that, that, uh, that the auditor is using will also help us provide, help provide us some guidance. Um, they are a nationwide company that is doing, rolling out this kind of management or collection of data of regarding to the expenditure of the, uh, American Recovery Act funds nationwide. They started in West Virginia, although it's a Florida-based company. And, uh, we have several communities now that have signed up, uh, in, in the area. You may have heard Kathy McGinnis make reference to the fact that Newark signed up and Lewis did and Dewey did, now Rahovith has joined. Um, and there are several other communities that are looking at joining. This will create a uniform, uh, system of reporting and the monies. Uh, the guys who are, um, in leadership of this company have reached out as recently as this afternoon, uh, seeking a, and, and a meeting with, uh, Ellen Lorraine and Anne Marie regarding, um, reporting and other services they can make available. I think it will help provide us some illustration of how other communities are spending these monies. So I think that can be a really good option for us, uh, in terms of learning more from others. The other, uh, question I would ask is, uh, what is the feeling of your, of concerning us, uh, organizing some kind of a recognition event for BB employees? If we're going to do that, we need to start planning with the hospitals. So it's not time sensitive. I think we would do it late summer or maybe even in September, but we do need to reach out and start talking with the BB folks about how we would do it and what it would look like. Is there support for that concept?
I would certainly support that Ted.
I, I would definitely support that Ted.
Okay.
I mean, I've been aware over the last year, uh, of, of many instances where uh, not just nurses, physicians, but others who have gone above and beyond the, the call of duty and and, and they have been recognized to some degree, but I'm not certain people understand, you know, what they went through. And Dr. Tam, Dr. Tam wasn't supposed to arrive here until April first.
Right.
He came two weeks early because of the pandemic.
That's right.
And, you know, and has been very engaged, uh, from, from day one.
And he jumped in with both. He, he was a big help in our, our hospitality ambassadors program. You've seen him on all those TV ads.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and he, you know, he's anxious to do that. And so he also was just recognized last week at the Healthcare Commission for, uh, repurposing the bookmobile and getting it in as a mobile vaccination clinic that is moving around to some of our, uh, communities that are not necessarily in Lewis, but are in the county within their service area, trying to get the vaccinations more broadly disseminated. So I think he's, he's a really great asset. So.
There are a couple of eligible categories that we haven't really talked about. Um, one is, is kind of the business support side of things. And there are a number of other funding sources through the same, you know, federal authorization that are directed to, um, businesses. So, so our thought is that that is provided for in other ways in the act. Um, and then the, the other thing that is discussed heavily in the act is, um, revenue replacement. And the revenue replacement would be looking at our fiscal year budget the year prior to COVID. And, and then looking to see where the gaps are. And, um, you know, we, the only gap between the twenty twenty fiscal year budget, which is the budget that was in effect when COVID went in and, um, the twenty twenty-one fiscal year budget. The only real gaps, I think we had maybe a thirty thousand dollar reduction total in parking revenue.
It's a legitimate expense.
It, and right, and it's, so, so we could, I mean, one of the things we could do is we could kind of scrub the twenty twenty versus twenty twenty-one revenues and look to see if there are legitimate places. Again, you need to have the documentation to show that it's real. So
Absolutely.
And, and it's, it's not based on your revenue projections. It's raised, it, it's, it's based on what your, your, um, budget was the prior year. So it's not, you know, we may have expected revenue to go up in parking and it went down. It's the difference between what it was the prior year and what it is. It's not, so, um, you know, we can certainly scrub and, and look at those things and, and, you know, make a transfer. Um, and I think to do, if we want to do that, we can do it. I would bring that back to council. You know, just so that, you know, I don't want, I, I want this all to be as transparent as possible. So while I, I say I'm comfortable, you know, with, you know, some of the, I don't know, what is it? Um, paying for staffing for vaccinations at summer concerts, I'm comfortable making that decision administratively or buying picnic tables for, for our employees. I'm, I'm comfortable making some of these decisions administratively, but I also don't want to make policy decisions administratively or, you know, broad, um, decisions administratively. So, um, so if we do determine that we want to use some of it for revenue replacement, we can, um, we would bring that back to you.
Okay.
Anne Marie, a question about that revenue replacement. Uh, that's not an additional grant that we're eligible for, is it? That's just something that would be drawn against the one point seven million dollars. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Anne Marie, was the, so that overtime money for the police, was that taken care of through the CARES Act or could we use this money to do that?
So that actually would be an eligible expense, but it was already paid by CARES Act. And for, for this pot of money, it's only things that are after March of this year.
Okay.
Um, Of twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, correct. March of twenty-one.
It'll be anything in the twenty-two budget.
With that, yeah.
I want to jump, yeah, I want to jump back to the, the recognition of BB for a second in that uh, I think it's a great, great idea and I, I want to offer up an extension of that to not just BB, but a, a separate entity or a separate event for our local businesses as well as nonprofits. Um, you mentioned Anne Marie that businesses and nonprofits have been, have had, have had access to programs like the PPP program and taking advantage of those, which they have. And frankly, BB has also been a beneficiary as states of, of other federal funding as well. But I do think it's, this is a very, if we're going to acknowledge BB, we should acknowledge our business community and our nonprofits, because despite the fact that many of them have maybe have made, been made whole to some degree. I know the psychological stress that they went under, when especially the restaurants and retail that had, were closed and were scared to death, did not know what was going to happen when that mandated closure was going to be lifted. And so I think um, it would be a great gesture on our part. And if they're, again, it doesn't need to be funding. It just needs to be some sort of event, recognizing, acknowledging their, what they went through. And I think it's something that, you know, leadership of a city should be doing. Um, to, uh, and, and it has so many good and tangible benefits for our citizens as well as us.
I agree with that. I mean, that was one of my initial things that I had put down, that we should recognize our businesses.
I think there's a lot more to be learned, to learn about, you know, what's available and what, what's being done elsewhere. I mean, the county has said, uh, as recently as last week, that they haven't started planning how they're going to spend their forty-five million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And for the county's, uh, the size of Sussex County, forty-five million dollars is a huge amount of money.
Yeah.
The county's never had a windfall anywhere close to that.
And, and Ted, that's not, that's not even to mention the, the windfall they've received in, in transfer taxes.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. So
They are.
Too bad some of this can't be spent on roads.
Right.
Real. Really.
So some of the things that, you know, I wanted to look at, for instance, if we do vaccination incentives for staff, one, that we would do something similar to the state where it would be for everybody vaccinated, not just those who got vaccinated after we started an incentive. I mean, that's one of the things that the state did. Um, but that if, if we did something in the way of gift cards, gift certificates, that it would be to Lewis businesses only. Um, and then same with National Night Out, if we do something where we get a third party to provide food, we would put it out to all Lewis restaurants for the opportunity to, to partner with us. And then they would get the, the funding associated with that. So the idea with both of those is that it, it would help to support then those local businesses as well. Again, we still want to look on any of these ideas as we kind of drill down and commit. We're going to look even more closely at the guidelines to make sure that we're not doing anything that, that people are gonna raise an eyebrow to. I mean, I, I'm, I feel pretty confident that the states, because now all of the states have gotten into these lottery things like Delaware's doing. Um, and I'm ninety-nine percent sure they're using their, their Recovery Act money for that. Um, that that's not coming from the general state tax dollars.
Well, I, I think, uh, in terms of two things that, uh, would have a time sensitivity to them or require planning time, uh, um, the National Night Out and the recognition of BB events are things that, uh, I'm hearing support for, I think. Um, and we need to, because National Night Out is the first week in August. We, if we're going to do that, we need to get started planning on it. Is everyone on board with doing that, something for National Night Out and then the way with which Anne Marie has described? We normally have, we, we, we have five, four thousand dollars in the budget, which is what we've done in the past. Um, this would undoubtedly be more expensive because it would be, um, a box lunch or something that would have to be prepared rather than um, the, uh, the PD staff and other staff members, uh, organizing and, and handling it. We'd have to go about it in a different way. So undoubtedly it would be more than what we would normally spend. Thoughts?
See, you're talking, National Night Out is in early August.
First weekend, first week, first Tuesday in August.
First Tuesday?
Mm-hmm. That's what we've normally done. We could shift it to another date, but we normally have done it then.
I
The, the national one is that August. So, but you know, we can always do something different.
Yeah, but if we're going to do it.
On the national one, that's limited.
Okay.
And you hold that at Blockhouse at the HP Smith?
It's always been held at Blockhouse. It's, it's, they usually is a, a DJ or a band and they're, um, in the, in the past, the PD has had lots of different things donated from various vendors, uh, not necessarily in Lewis, but Walmart has been a big supporter. They give away bicycles and other things to kids who come. It really is a, a, an opportunity for the police to interface with residents of the community.
I did an outdoor event, which they deem to be the safest type of events to have.
And it draws, you know, pretty much young and old draws across the board.
Well, perhaps one way to support the local businesses, particularly the local restaurants is maybe can, can track with them to actually provide food.
Yeah. Right. Oh, absolutely. Yeah. And I think if we do something with BB, again, which I'm looking at, at this checkerboard, uh, that I think, I'm thinking there's support for doing that as well. So if we're going to do something, we would do similar outreach to the local restaurants to see if they wouldn't uh, come forward and help us with that.
I have, uh, I'd like to ask two questions, please. Uh, first of all, I've never taken, uh, advantage of National Night Out. So I don't really have an appreciation of what it is, what the purpose of it is. Uh, is there a brief description that someone could offer?
It's really interesting. It's, it's an opportunity for the people to get to know the police force.
It's a promotion. Actually, in terms of our priority on community policing, this is really
That's exactly what it is.
Probably. And we've always had the police cooking, so maybe if they're not busy cooking, they can get out and mingle with the
Right.
uh, public.
Folks, yeah.
Also been a good opportunity for, our bike pet has always helped out with this. In terms of a bicycle rodeo, they've had, uh, had helmets they can give away and other things that they can do. And so it's been a, for some of the people who, uh, you know, may not be able to afford a bicycle or may not have a helmet. So, uh, when, when it's been done in the past, Don did this in nineteen, uh, Don Long, uh, you know, they, they fit helmets to kids. And so that if, they brought a helmet and it wasn't, they weren't wearing it properly. They taught them how to wear it properly. So it's been a good interface.
Yeah, over in Block Pond.
Yep.
Yeah.
Under the trees, uh, right there by the parking area.
Yeah, the second question I have, I, I'd like to ask, uh, Khalil and Carolyn, uh, to, can you describe what you have in mind? I know this is very early in the discussion. I mean, it was just introduced, the subject matter. But what what are you thinking as far as a effort or gesture to to honor the B B community? What what are you thinking? Because, yeah, what do you have in mind? Do you have any ideas?
No, I only see the signs around from neighbors and everything, thanking them, thanking them, thanking them. And I see this as an opportunity to say thank you for what they've done. That's how I that's how I perceive.
I can foresee an actual event, maybe at Canalfront Park or close by at at George Smith Park, where we actually bike B B employees. And again, this is an opportunity to have like a little gathering with them, have, you know, acknowledge Dr. Tam, provide food and drink. And again, that ancillary has, you know, also benefits our restaurants, who can, you know, who will be happy with that, you know, that gesture in terms of purchasing the food. But I see some sort of event. But I mean, there's plenty of ways to do to do this.
Just to thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't see us going out, I don't see us going out and buying, you know, five hundred gift cards and giving them out, you know.
No, I don't think so.
A lot of people on that in the past, the B B Foundation encouraged it and they were very successful. But I think, you know, we want to do this more on a personal level than cities recognize B B for what they did.
Yeah, exactly.
I can see a a big ad in the Cape Gazette.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah. Well, we'll meet up with the hospital staff and see what, you know, what they have to think. Doctor Tam's office seems to be very interested in the idea. So we can reach out and see what that comes out. We'll report back. Okay. Any further discussion on this? I think we'll come back and discuss this as it goes along, once we get more guidance and things are moving.
Okay.
See what we got. So there's no further discussion on that. And I would suggest we recess this meeting and recon
Two other things on this meeting with the
That was the only thing that for this, other than a executive session.
I thought there were some things on here for a silent.
No, that's on Monday night coming up.
You know what? I don't know.
I thought there were things on there for the bike.
Oh, you know, you know what happened?
No.
Oops. Okay. They're for next week. And when they were submitted, they had in the system, they were submitted under today's date. So I think they automatically populated the agenda today.
Okay. So they're not time sensitive for Del Dod or anything?
No.
No, 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 that was it. It was a technology error, not knowing the power of our own technology.
Okay.
Sorry about that. But you know, it said, are we doing bike recommendations? And I was like, no, why? I didn't.
Okay. So we'll recess this meeting and we'll close out this screen production and we'll meet in person here at it all. As soon as you guys can get there. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Yep, see you shortly.